I'd like to call the regular meeting of the National Town Council for June 15th to order. Could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we invite you into this meeting tonight to fill it with your presence to help us and lead us and guide us in making the right decisions for our town of Nashville. Amen. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes for the May 4 regular meeting. If you look at those, are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes for May 4? Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. The next section on our agenda is public comments. I'd like to remind you of number eight on the public comment policies, that people that are speaking are to refrain from personal attacks of people and is to discuss issues that we're working on with the council. So with that being said, James Baker, would you go to the podium? State your name and give us your comments.
My name is James Baker. I reside at 103 East Green Street. I just wanted to bring up the topic about the budget. It's a real concern. When you're in the business on the budget, you're either gonna have to cut or you don't have to get revenue. And it's been expressed how I see here, it's got a problem with revenue issues here, not being able to support everything that you want to do. And I think that it needs to come a time that this town is growing, believe it or not. Some say that the youth, people not moving in here with families and all, but I'm gonna tell you, a house here goes in the market here at this price period, it's gone in one or two days. So for people to say that nobody doesn't want to come here, I don't believe that so. I wish that we had one of the realtors and I think they would back that up. I think the main issue, why you may not be having people with families, is that our school system is very poor today. And anybody, even like in Rockhampton, that was an issue. So that might be the main reason why we may not be getting kids, you know, moving here in this space just back when we had the parking rent issue last year. And that's why the county had to take it over because we don't have that many kids here that reside in the city limits. So I think as far as the revenue, we cannot keep spending more than what we've got coming in. And you know, if we're growing like on South Creek in Cooperstown, a lot of these people are expressing these things that they want to use our amenities and want more than amenities. But I think it might come a time now, we might need to start thinking down the line. I might not live to see it, but one day these areas will have to be annexed in somewhere. Because the house like I was in before, it was a 50-year-old house, we all had wells. And in due time, these wells all go bad. They get contaminated. And you know, like I said, another thing is too, you got a lot of the people here, like myself, that's maybe middle-aged and older. And you know, we gotta think about, just think about before you cover any increases in taxes and revenues and stuff, think about the poor people because a lot of these people don't have these pockets. You know, just think about before making a decision. And as far as stuff like the zip line and stuff, that's fine. Just like I was thinking about maybe having a pool, but again, the city's got to realize we're gonna have liability back insurance. That's gonna be another expense that's gonna be on the taxpayers. So I just ask that before we think about any more new ideas, I'm down for Amity, but we all, the small town here in the city limits, we cannot take care of everything like maybe outside we want as well.
That's all I have to say. Thanks, Jay. Barbara, your hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the board, hello. This goes back, what I want to say, to the last time I spoke and I couldn't get my thoughts out about the schools. So I wrote it down and I would appreciate if everyone would listen. When I last spoke, I believe I said that people, when they are moving to an area with children, want to know how schools are. I did say Nash schools were not good and this creates a negative effect. I did not make this up. The top school district's ranking is compiled by U.S. News and World Report and it's based on student performance, math reading test scores, dropout rates, school funding, area poverty rates. Nash and Rocky Mount schools rank 94 out of 100 in our state. This is by county. Bearing the lower 15, the town council needs to be proactive and talk with the school board. We've all got to get together and get to the county commissioner and ask, how can we fix this failing school system? This is our children. Our children here who are not getting the education they deserve to become a vibrant member of society and not a low-income, never meeting their potential burden. Let's not fail them. Let's be the village that raises them up. And people come here for different reasons. I know I did and I'm in my 70s. I don't have children. So that wasn't an issue for me. But other reasons are jobs, just a wonderful place to be. We love Nashville and I've always said it, it's like Mayberry without the traffic. I love, I am here. So there are a lot of different people, a lot of different reasons for them to come and hopefully, you know, bring their abilities here and we all grow from it. And I just want people to come and enjoy and love the town of Nashville. But we gotta get everything together and present it as a little gem that they didn't know was here. And I really would like, and I know the school's not your problem, but I know there's a board and I know they must need help because we're in the bottom 15. That's not good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Barbara. Dorita Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to find out if there's any information on revisiting the sidewalk system where we were originally doing some work on the sidewalks and then it stopped and unfortunately, it stopped right near my house. So I'm talking about between Alston and Collins. All this, I fell out there today just trying to break this stuff. And then, you know, we had the situation with the trees. So I guess that's kind of getting resolved. So a lot of the trees that fell on my property, a lot of, I have a big two bars that go across the front. The one on the left side of the house is completely smashed from those trees. And I was wondering if that sidewalk system could be tied into that one bar. It's a mess and I was trying to figure out what to do with that before I have to go and try to do something on my own.
Dorita, am I right, Randy? We did put money in the budget this coming year because we ran out of our old money in the old budget to do some repair on the sidewalks, on the main street.
So that's 2022 that that's gonna happen?
It starts after July 20. Our new budget starts in July.
July and then, okay. So that will be revisited at that time?
Right, yeah. We've already put the money in the budget, we just got to replace that.
Well, and someone's gonna come in and start looking at what is left there because a lot of things have happened again with the storms that was not there when they first started to do it.
So I feel like a little bit, Dorita. Thank you.
Randy, do you have any information on that specific section?
We have $40,000 budgeted for sidewalk repair. And unfortunately, Dorita's section of it, it's one of those where, you know, we talked about in the budget work session, where do you stop? I mean, all the sidewalk panels are bad. They all need to be replaced. So a good section of that sidewalk between Alston and Collins is going to be slated for replacement.
Al Hyde.
Al with H O.
Okay, that is all of the people for public comment tonight. So we'll move on with our business. Our first item on old business is the decision on granting RBD Investments Incorporated a special use permit for S2021-02 for residential planned unit development HUD on 110 acres of the former Birchwood Golf Course along Birchwood Drive in Nashville. I'll turn it over to Sherri Moss.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This item came before us on May 4, 2021 and it was from RBD Investments. Their plan was special use permit 2021-02 for residential planned unit development on a 110-acre lot which was formerly a Birchwood Golf Course along Birchwood Drive in Nashville. And the public hearing was held. And at this quasi-judicial public hearing, council heard testimony, received evidence from the applicant and other experts on how the applicant's planned unit development meets residential plan requirements in sections 18-113, 18-115, and 18-116 of Nashville Land Use Ordinance. And the decision for this special use permit was taken. And attached in your packet, you have the revised site plan, which was the same that was given to you at the last meeting. And also, you have in your packet the findings of facts that you will have to consider in granting or denying the special use.
Is there any discussion from the council?
Well, Mayor, the phone calls that, excuse me, the phone calls that I've been getting and the concerns that the citizens are having was that of the density issue out there with this development. But based on what our restrictions are, our guidelines are, I guess they satisfy those restrictions as long as it doesn't go below 50% of the lot size. In other words, I don't need to see two houses on one lot. I reduce it down so it appears that way. Traffic, they say it's adequate enough with the streets in and streets out to accommodate the traffic. Me personally, and this is my personal opinion, and I'm not an expert. I think it's just gonna be too much traffic. But again, they had a person that's more versed in this issue than I was, said it was ample traffic enough. Green space, I wasn't satisfied with the green space. Neither were the people that contacted you about green space. And I would certainly hope that once this area gets developed, that he keeps that strongly in mind. One thing that I can hang my hat on is that the condominiums that he's putting up does not meet the harmony of the rest of the neighborhood. So based on that, I'm against approving the special use permit. Everything else he meets, and I have no legal ramifications as to voting against it. But not meeting the harmony of the neighborhood does stand out and that's what I hang my hat on.
Is that a motion?
Well, I want to hear what the rest of the council has to say before I do that.
If it was a motion, I would second it, but I actually have different reasons for it. In our findings of fact, we need to find, first, that it will not materially endanger the public health or safety located where it is and how it's going to be developed. And I think that specific traffic data was requested by some of the members of the council and I don't know that that was actually given. With the 367 proposed lots, the assumption is that there is going to be one car per lot, which I think is a very low assumption. And with that comes an increase of 3,800 trips per day based on the average daily trips per household. So if we're looking at that, I don't know that I can say that they met their standard of saying that those who are walking there, the pedestrians, the kids who are walking to school, aren't going to be negatively impacted by the 3,800 trips that will be increasing there. So I don't know that they have actually met their burden with the endangering public health or safety. The next one that I looked at was whether it met the conditions and specifications. And I think just off the bat, with the purpose of the regulation, it was to provide desirable open space, tree cover, recreation areas, scenic vistas, and a variety of residential properties. And I don't think the purpose was met. As for the open space requirements, I too have some major issues with that. With the open space requirements, it says that it must be included. It says that details must be given and it says that the requirements shall include the following. It goes into the characteristics where it cannot consist of only narrow strips or fragmented pieces of land that serve no useful purpose. It says that the required open space must be one continuous area unless each open space is equal to or greater than one acre. And in our PUD section, we have a requirement that the PUD have at least five acres in it to even have a PUD. And then it talks about having at least one acre of open space for that five-acre portion. So it contemplates that if you were to have five acres of property, one acre should be open spaced. For this type of size parcel, 22 acres of continuous open space or single one-acre open space lots should have been available and that was not met. Further, the regulations when they talk about lot sizes, they say every time that you reduce the lot size from the 10,000 square foot requirement, that the difference between what the reduction is and that square footage requirement has to be added back into open space. And based on my calculation there, an additional 28.6 acres of legitimate usable open space should have been added and it wasn't. The open space that was presented was the dog park area that is approximated at three acres, a storm retention pond which is estimated at three acres. And then everything else was nothing more than narrow strips of fragmented pieces of land, all under one acre, which serve no useful purpose. We also require that you have convenient access for all of the people in that development. And so the fact that we're looking at five of eight of the supposed open space giving no access to anybody except for that small little townhouse community that's maybe giving the back of their portion or the storm water that can only be accessed by a couple of those townhomes. And several of the open space calculations were in fact the front yard and backyard of people's townhomes, which I don't think that there's any reasonable expectation that somebody who's living in the single-family detached area would be able to use that for their own recreational purposes. The last finding, or sorry, the third finding of fact that we need is that it won't substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. And I don't think that there was a production of sufficient substantial or competent material evidence with that regard. We were given one article that wasn't clear of what studies it was talking about, what land it was studying, whether it was in the state of North Carolina or somewhere nationally, whether it was, you know, a neighborhood that was local and I don't think that it was. And then similarly, generalized statements that seniors want to live in Nashville, I don't think meets the requirement that this is something that is a public necessity. The last one, which is actually the one that you brought up, because townhomes are in the R-10, I kind of see that as meaning that theoretically it could be in harmony because it is allowed as a special use in that area unless it's shown by material and substantial evidence otherwise. And I don't know that it was refuted. And then in our future planned use map, it shows that it's supposed to be green space, but it's currently zoned for R-10. So that one, I struggled a little with, a little bit with, but it's really the other ones that I relied upon to think that this is not something that meets the criteria where we can have a finding of fact in favor of this.
But it would be in harmony if we approved the special use permit. And that's the question I have.
I can't go and say exactly what Kate said, but I do have some of the same issues. I was concerned about density in the area, having so many units and the mixture of units with condominiums and duplexes in an already established R-10 neighborhood. The open space is a big concern for me as well. That was one of the things we really hoped we'd be able to have some amount preserved that would make the area retain some of that openness. And then of course, the traffic was one of the first issues that I had mentioned too. I'd hope to see some actual numbers coming back from someone and nothing was brought back to us about that. And then the other thing that Kate referenced, the article that was brought up regarding the impacts on property values. When I looked at the article, I think it seemed to be referring to affordable housing, which I don't believe this will be, so I don't know that that correlates exactly. For that reason, I don't feel like I can support the RBD special use permit.
Mayor, before we do anything, if there's anyone here that represents RBD that may want to speak to rebut what we just talked about, I would like to hear from him if he's here.
Do I hear a motion from the council?
I move that at this point that we do not approve the special use.
My second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, a point of order. Each one of the four findings of fact have to be voted on individually.
Thank you for reminding me.
And the reasons have to be stated and maybe Kate's already.
Okay.
Kate stated them.
The first finding of fact is that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety of located, where proposed, and developed according to the plan submitted. I believe that the traffic data was requested, it was not given. When looking at the number of cars that are going through here and the assumptions of there being 3,800 trips per day increase in what is an already existing neighborhood where they will actually have to drive through a neighborhood in order to get out. They will have to drive these roads that kids are walking to school and pedestrians are on. I can't say that the burden was satisfactorily met and so they did not produce sufficient substantial incompetent material evidence for the council to conclude that that portion has been met.
So do I hear a motion on that? Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Okay, motion carries. Second, please, Kate.
The second finding of fact is that the use meets all the required conditions and specifications. I believe that the applicant has failed to produce sufficient substantial competent material evidence that it met the required conditions and specifications of the PUD regulations. It does not comply with the purpose of the regulation, which was to provide desirable open space, tree cover, recreation areas, and scenic vistas as well as a variety of residential properties. It does not comply with the open space requirements where it's defined that it's supposed to be preserved, maintained, and improved by the development owner for recreational use of the residents of that development. The open space must be included as part of it, the property being subdivided. Details have to be provided. And the open space shall have the following characteristics. It can't consist of only narrow strips or fragmented pieces of land that serve no useful purpose. The required open space must be one continuous area unless each open space is equal to or greater to one acre. Based on these calculations, I don't believe that the open space requirement has been met as far as acreage for this particular size parcel. The open space has to have, to be convenient pedestrian access to all of the lots within the PUD, either directly forth through a right-of-way easement. And five out of the supposed open spaces do not do that. The open space includes front yards and backyards of the townhomes and the duplexes which cannot reasonably be used for other homeowners' personal recreational use. And so therefore, I do not think that they have shown with material substantial evidence that they have met all the requirements of the PUD.
So do I hear a motion of the council?
Sure, Mayor.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The third finding of fact that we need to say is that the use will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. The applicant has failed to produce sufficient substantial competent or material evidence that the use will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting properties. The abutting property owners purchased this property on a golf course with future planned use of the property being green space. References to a general article about studies on home values and the impact of housing developments where it is unclear what homes in which states are being studied is insufficient to meet the standard necessary to establish a foundation for opinion testimony regarding property value impacts. This is merely speculative opinion rather than facts and cannot be the basis of finding for value impacts. Similarly, a generalized statement that seniors want to live in Nashville does not meet the burden that the use is a public necessity.
Do I hear a motion? Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The last finding of fact is that the location and character of the use if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the plan of development of the town. The townhomes are listed as an approved special use in an R-10, which means that it theoretically is in harmony with the area unless shown otherwise by material and substantial evidence, which I don't think was presented. Our current future planned use for this parcel is green space. So it's not in conformity with that. However, it is zoned R-10 and is in conformity with the current plan of development for the town. So this one, I think they actually have met the burden.
So do we have to vote on that? I need a motion.
Do we?
You need to vote on that, whether or not it makes that remark.
So I think it has met the requirement.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
And therefore, when the applicant fails to produce sufficient evidence for the board to make the requisite finding of all four of the top criteria, the permit must be denied.
So do I hear a motion?
I think we already made the motion to deny it.
Yeah, we need a motion to back those. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is...
Now, Mayor, I want everybody to note, and this does not hinder his development of the...
It's still in R-10, he can still develop this.
It's only referring to the special use part.
Right, as R-10, 10,000 square foot, correct?
Any other comments, council, on that? The next item on our agenda is of old business is ours, Hill Cemetery. So Randy, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. As the agenda report reads, that we have different rules for different sections of our cemetery. And people see what's allowed in one and assume it can be done in others. And often, most often times, the people who actually purchase the cemetery lots aren't communicating that to their next of kin. So after they pass, then the family next of kin sometimes want to decorate the graves in those sections of the neighborhood where our cemetery where it's not allowed. So this has been a situation the town has had to deal with for a number of years. I don't know if Chris Acocks made it here this evening. He's one of our cemetery employees, been there 18 years and it's been a struggle, as he can attest to, ever since he came to work for the town of Nashville. You know, I would like to advise the council that we take a hard stance on this and enforce the rules in the sections where they're applicable. That would be, it would seem like the right thing to do. We have employees that will tell you from experience, it's not. It won't be tolerated. We will have, we will have a lot of pushback to it. So in light of that, I guess what I would like to recommend to the council that we craft some very appealing signs that we can put at the four entrances, the four main entrances to our cemetery that state the rules. And on the bottom, you know, we have a drawing that shows the sections of the cemetery. And people then can, if they're so inclined, stop and read that and know what rules apply to which sections of the cemetery. We won't necessarily identify with a sign each section of the cemetery, but I'm pretty sure, you know, an aerial photo put on the sign designating A through J or K can be clearly understood and people can follow that. So I put that forth as an idea to the council. Still open to any suggestions you guys may have for how we can effectively and uniformly enforce the rules in the cemetery.
When most people are coming into the cemetery, they're driving though, correct? So they would be driving past those signs. I like your idea about the radio station, to be honest. Just with the applicable rules that, you know, are immediate as far as what type of thing can be put at the gravesite and then please see our town website for the additional rules. When we're collecting information, when people are purchasing lots, do we request next of kin info?
We do, but I don't know how often we receive all that information. I mean, it's not required, but you know, any of the lot, we don't do the perpetual maintenance anymore, which is primarily where we would have asked for and received that information. So you know, that perpetual maintenance fee is now rolled into the purchase of the lots themselves.
You know, reading through these, our restrictions for the cemetery. I see what says mausoleums are allowed in section 1, 2, A, B. says mausoleums are allowed in section one, two, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and G.I. And I understand why those particular sections are zoned for mausoleums simply because it's more level. But other than that, I think every other section in the cemetery should follow the same guidelines throughout. It says in section fifteen forty-five D, yard ornaments, such as walls, fences, gates, benches, and other similar types of ornaments, will be left up to, and I use the word discretion of our cemetery personnel. I don't think we need to put that burden on any employee after that. The rule, I think we need to remove this section completely and just stick with the rules, so nobody, because if whoever is in charge of the cemetery this year may not be the same person next year, and what looks appealing to me may not be appealing to you. So just sort of, sort of hard rules out and say, other than the mausoleum sections, every other plot in the cemetery should remain the same. Now, I know we're going to have some cleaning up we have to do, but I think we need to feed all the, not residents, but family members from the same sheet of paper. Don't leave that discretion, that thing. I like it, you don't like it, up to a town employee. We can put it in black and white. I moved that we remove this section in its entirety.
And just prohibit all walls, fences, gates, benches, gravel?
Throughout the entire cemetery, except for the section where mausoleums and mausoleums are allowed.
And what do we do about those who already have it?
Clean it up.
There is a mausoleum, there is, in the McDowell pit, that plot, there is a bench with their name on it. It's been there probably eighty years.
Is that where the mausoleums are?
It's in the old section.
It's in the old section?
It's where Dorothy and Roger London are buried, are mother and father.
Well...
I don't know that we can retroactively clean it up. I think we might have to have something...
I would hate to, to...
Right.
To remove, a bench that's been there for quite a while.
Yeah, and I think it's...
I have to back off on that little part.
That we're going to have to handle very fairly and very gently.
And I think a lot of rewriting of these rules needs to happen to clarify and to see what our real problems are with administering in the cemetery and what aren't issues, like...
And at the same time, maybe still post some rules, you know?
Oh, yeah, still post them.
Post those, but let us do some cleaning up, because a lot of people, like Randy said, have not looked at this, you know? Suppose the first person that was put in a plot there, you know?
I'm not, I'm not recommending that we remove benches that were posted there years passed, but I'm talking about the other, and I hate to use the word frivolous, but the other loose stuff that was just thrown out there.
I think if it's, if it's something that's not kept up, something that's in disrepair, if it's something like gravel where the weeds are growing and no one is actually caring for that, and it's something that's a burden to the employees, then we can do something like a, you know, a structure in here where we have some remedial action, you know, where if things are not kept up or don't meet these requirements, then we can give notice and then remove them ourselves. But I'm hesitant to say, let's just retroactively go back and, and change it. I think that those are kind of, they are what they are, and then moving forward, if there are problem areas, then we can address that through remedial efforts.
Well, I don't know if any of you have written out there or not, but I wrote out there and looked at it, and there's some graves that have maybe five or six little things sticking in them, and the wind has blown them over, and it really is not appealing to the eye.
And I think we have in here, like, the two-month, you know, if you put the flowers or things like that, it's allowed to stay for two months and then has to go. So in order to not shock people when that happens, we need to get the rules out, but I agree, we need to make a standardized set of rules that apply to everybody.
I think that's, would you make that as a motion?
Sure. Yes, it's a move.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. So maybe if you just get some rules until we get this together, that'd be great. Okay, let us move on to our new business. The first is the review and discuss submitted an Economic Development Administrative EDA grant for the Cook Road Water Extinction Project. Now, I'll turn that over to Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had planned to submit an EDA Economic Development Administration grant for a project that would install five hundred feet, five thousand feet of eight-inch water main from the West Nash Commerce Park on Cook Road up to Western Avenue. And EDA funds would pay for half of it if that were approved. To reduce the town's cost, I also applied to the Golden Leaf Foundation for a $200,000 economic development grant. We found out June third that that grant was not awarded. As the letter said, far more requests and needs than they had money to fund this time around, and they left the door open that we could reapply again in six months. With regard to the Economic Development Administration application, I don't know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at all the things that we're faced with right now. I would love to do this project if it's not vital at this point. We're still able to put additional tenants out in the West Nashville Commerce Park. We have sufficient water to do that. We're going to be running in problems as if we have a large water user. We may not be able to deliver, you know, on a, on a one-route water main. You know, this, this project I'm proposing would loop it, so effectively feeding it from two different directions and doubling your water capacity. The way it is right now, it comes off Alston, follows Cook, until you get to West Nashville Commerce Park. So I guess at this point, I recommend to the council that we forego applying for the EDA money at this point. I have been told by Ben Farmer with the Upper Coastal Plains Council Government that the American Recovery Funds have also hit the Economic Development Administration, and they may be gearing up for tweaking this program so it's eighty-twenty instead of fifty-fifty. And also working with our economic development partners, Nash County and Carolina Gateway Partnership, we may have some jobs slated to be coming for a project in this park in a year or so. So it's always good to have jobs, to be able to pledge jobs for these grant funds, because they are, they are job-dependent.
So based on the size of the buildings that we're putting out there, we do have ample water supply?
For, for, yeah, for users right now.
Unless we get somebody that wants to use all this building.
Or needs a lot of water, like...
Or needs a lot, you're right.
Processing facility.
Right, okay.
Do we know how to increase our chances when applying for this in the future, or why they denied it?
I didn't get the scoring, scorecard for our application. I've requested that, so when I get that, I'm hoping, but a lot of it, Kate, has to depend who else applied at the same time.
I saw that.
And whether they have a greater, perceive greater need than we do.
Do I hear a motion that we postpone the applying for the EDA grant money? Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Our next item on the agenda is item B, which is, notification to utility customers of rate and fuel increases effective July one, July one. Randy, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Well, in the budget work sessions, all of you felt it was very important, before the new utility rates go into effect, we'd send a letter to every rate user, every customer in town. So I drafted one, shared it with you. Some of you thought that we could, we could do a better job with that, and Lynn took the liberty of drafting a letter, and that's what we have on the agenda tonight, is to discuss any changes that you made. I read this, I thought this was very good. There are a few probably bigger words in there that we need to simplify, I think, so that it's easier for everyone to understand, and I have those highlighted on my version, but, you know, this, we can turn this thing around very quickly and actually get it out the door tomorrow if the council approves what they're satisfied with here this evening. We have the equipment now at Town Hall that can print this, fold it, stuff it, put it in an envelope, and put postage on it, and we can mark it across the, to the post office tomorrow afternoon. So if you want, I can read for everybody what the letter says as it's proposed thus far.
Can you read your highlighted changes? Well, I don't know if I want that read first or...
Well, I can tell you when I come upon it.
Okay, good.
So it says, Dear Nashville Utility Customer, this letter is to inform you that the town's fee schedule has been updated with several changes that will be effective July one of 2021. Complete fee schedule can be found on the town's website under the 2021-2022 fee schedule. If you would like a hard copy of the multiple, multi-page document sent to you, please call Town Hall, I think it's the phone number. Regrettably, the town's water, sewer, and sanitation fees have not kept pace with the cost of providing services for the town since 2013, 2014, causing the enterprise fund to operate at a loss whereby depleting its funds.
As Randy was talking there, if that's the case, why weren't we taken over by the LGC?
Well, because you have reserve funds, Louise. The council, each year that the revenues didn't cover the expense, the town council made up the difference with the reserve funds. And that's, that's perfectly acceptable, as far as, you know, the LGC is.
So we've been operating at a loss since 2013?
When you look strictly at your revenues and your expenses, yes.
Since 2013, the town of Nashville has reduced its available net assets by 2.87 million.
And that's since when?
2013.
2013.
Every year, since 2013.
Continuing on, in addition to insufficient customer fees, there are multiple factors reflected below contributing to the operating setback that has occurred this 2020-2021, including the following. If you guys will recall from the budget work sessions, there were like eight different things, some more significant than others. The first one, we've seen a 30% increase in cost of sewage treatment and a 60% increased cost in sewer surcharges with the city of Rocky Mount over the prior year due to, it says high incident, they've changed that to a large amount of inflow and infiltration of stormwater into our sanitary sewer system. The town's response, you will also recall from our budget work sessions, the staff proposed a five-year plan for getting our water and sewer, our enterprise fund back on track and being more and more solvent than it has been. The five-year plan is to televise all sewer lines and repair where groundwater and surface water is injuring, and we've already started that. It continues implementation of industrial sewage pretreatment program, and probably change the word implementation to something maybe a little simpler, maybe, beginning with an industrial sewer pretreatment program aimed at reducing contaminants discharged into the town sewer system. Use of a velocity sewer meter at the connection that accurately, that connection being where our system meets Rocky Mount, discharged into the town sewer system, I'm sorry, use of the velocity meter at the connection that accurately measures high flow, or high sewage flows for billing for Rocky Mount. As you know, right now, when their meter, which is out on Oak Carriage Road, goes underwater, which happens during heavy rain periods, more water gets there than it can meter, and it goes underwater. There's, there's an assumed quantity of water that goes through the pipe continuing onto Rocky Mount, and it's got a volume of 2.5 cubic feet per second. And when their meter goes underwater and they can't get a reading off of it, they use that formula up to the time it starts till that flood event is over, and that's how they calculate that. Now, as you know, our investigation with our own engineering firm and studying that have found, has found that that, that 2.5 figure is high. We've, we've had three events in where their meter has gone underwater, and when we had the velocity meter in the pipe, every one of those measured a lower velocity than 2.5. We had 2.1, 2.2, and that's what was caught. Our consultant had calculated the previous twelve months of incidents where their meter went underwater, and if it would have been billed at the 2.2, we would have saved $73,000 for that twelve-month period. So it does have some significance there. Continuing on, enactment of our fats, oil, and grease program, and probably change the word enactment to expansion, because we currently have one, fats, grease, and oils program, would also reduce some of the 30% increase and 60% increase in sewer surcharges. And then finally, negotiate with Rocky Mount a change to the way sewer surcharges are being calculated during high flows. That is something we also have in discussion with the city of Rocky Mount. You know, I think I've explained before, when, when you increase the volume of wastewater going to Rocky Mount, you don't necessarily increase the mass of the glutens that it's appearing, they stay relatively the same, you just have more water delivering them. So trying to get Rocky Mount to recognize that and maybe cap what the sewer surcharges are billed upon a normal low-flow volume, because they're not getting any greater mass or quantity of glutens, they're just getting more water with it.
And I think the public needs to know that us putting those additional meters out there to get those second readings has cost the town money.
Yeah, but hopefully you've seen the value in it.
Oh, I agree with the value in it, but everybody needs to note that it, it didn't come free of charge.
Second, the town's largest producing water well, which is well number six over in the Birchwood area, has been not inoperable for several months, which has increased the amount of water we have had to purchase from Rocky Mount. Typically, 60%, we buy, 40% we produce, we're higher than that right now. We do now have a test, a flow test on the well number six scheduled for, I think it's June 23rd, and, you know, the hydrology of that well could have changed. It's been in, in production for over twenty years, and we're likely going to have to put a smaller submersible pump in that that doesn't pump as much water. Hopefully, that will resolve the air and the water issue at that well.
So Randy, what is it producing right now?
Right now, nothing.
Nothing.
What it was, I don't know, Lee, do you, it's Lee here, do you recall what well number six was doing?
Just over two million gallons a month.
I mean, that's, that's a considerable amount of water, two million gallons a month. The town's response, several attempts to correct the problem have not worked thus far, but the town continues to work with engineering assistance to fix these issues so that well number six is fully functional once again. And I'm confident we're going to get that thing back online at some point.
Now, again, I know that there was a cost that goes with that, that the public needs to know about.
Yeah, there is.
Did you add the word work?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I put the word work in there. Number three, the town encountered three broken lift stations in 2020, 2021. The response, of course, we replaced all those with new.
Got a cost.
Yeah, that, they were $8,500 apiece.
There you go.
On number four, it starts out, the town's water and sewer infrastructure, maybe begin, due to its age, the town's water and sewer infrastructure is in a rapid declining state of condition, state of mode, even with increased spending in capital assets over the last five years. The town's response to that, with the American Asset Recovery Act funds, the town will enlist consultants to conduct an asset inventory assessment to include a ten-year capital improvement plan, a GIS mapping of the entire system, and a water-slash-sewering rate study. In addition, repairs and replacements of failing infrastructure will begin immediately for the most critical areas.
Have we received any of that money yet from the American Recovery? the American Recovery?
No.
I thought we were supposed to get half of it by the end of May.
We have not received funds.
On the back page end, "All these factors have played a role in the rate increase users will see in July. The town council understands these increases are difficult, and the decision to increase them was also a difficult one. However, they are necessary to maintain the financial solvency and maybe we replace that with the word financially sound water and sewer fund for the town, which is our responsibility." In the chart below, the likely impacts of the new fees and rates on town residents, residential customers are listed. Any citizen questions can be addressed to the town finance department with the phone number given.
There are two things I think that were left out of the letter that should be included. One was the failure to implement the sewer increase that we voted on last June.
Can I just get clarification on what that was? Because we keep calling it an increase. But my memory is that it was like our base fee and our rate that we constantly got questions about, saying, "What is this fee? What is this fee? Why do we have two?" So, we just combined the two to make one fee.
We were looking, we restructured completely the rates last year. And in doing so, in the ordinance, some language changed. And when the language was changed, the fees, a couple of the fees should have been added together.
So, two separate fees just became one fee?
Correct. I mean, the rates, I mean, we're looking at probably the page and a half of numbers.
Right.
One of those numbers did not get added.
Right, so instead of adding the two, we just went with the lower number and got rid of the other rate instead of adding the two together.
So, what we wanted to do was take the base rate and allow that to include the first 1,000 gallons of pollution. And we did that with the water. So, what you had to do is take the base rate that you were proposing and add the cost of 1,000 gallons to it. And that was done in the water side. It just did not get done in the sewer side.
So...
The base fee remained the same. It should have increased.
There was no actual increase?
No actual increase.
The cost of 1,000 gallons.
Right, they were just joined together.
Was not.
So, I guess my point is we keep calling it an increase, but in fact, townspeople saw a savings during the time that there was a failure to...
It was a savings.
...charge the $6 per month per user.
9:53.
9:53.
Maybe a savings to the citizens, but it was...
To our detriment, for sure.
To our detriment for the water and sewer fund.
But it's really a correction right now, not an increase.
But that should be mentioned in the letter, that we lost that revenue for a good 10 months.
Well, I think this letter is addressing the fees that are going to be in effect July 1st, and that change has already been made, so I don't agree with it.
I think you have to give reasons for the increase, and this is one.
Is this really a factor? Even if we had changed those funds, we'd still be increasing these?
Reasons for the increase go back, you know, as we've said, and I've said several times, and I just want to restate once again. The fund's been operating on a deficit, in a deficit state since 2013. Revenues have not been sufficient since 2013, so well before, you know, the 10-month period of time. So, I, you know, once again, restating, looking back at the rates, there have been no significant rate increases since at least 2007. There was only one, and that was only to basically mirror what the city of Rocky Mount was doing, that was not in any way to shore up the rates that we should have proposed at that time. So, once again, just restating that since 2007, our rates have not had any significant increases whatsoever. And, you know, if you just want to, you know, look at the town of Nashville, our system, some of the characteristics, we're a small utility system, and we're also a wholesale customer of a large utility system. And those two points alone, you know, when you look at those utility systems, just like us, they tend to have rates on the higher side just because of those two reasons. And where our rates just simply have not kept up with the costs. And so, that's the reason for the rate increase. And I do also want to, you know, point out and just state for the record, you know, it was discussed in work, you know, the work sessions, but I want to make it very clear, you know, we may not be finished with rate increases. We may need to, we need to continue to look at these rates. You know, these rates here are simply break-even rates. It's not giving us enough funds to really, you know, tough away for emergency situations. So, if we were to encounter another emergency, you know, we're looking at having to raise rates or issue debt or do something else. So, we need to keep that also in mind, that we may have to raise rates once again.
Well, and in order to be transparent, I think we need to know that, as well as the closing of our largest water customer.
And that did happen, but we had no control of that.
Exactly, but that is part of letting people know.
Yeah, and how much revenue did we lose by that company moving out?
I don't, I don't think... The CFI closing and the failure to implement the sewer rate increase, how much revenue did we lose?
Less than 300,000, 300,000 or so.
When it comes to CFI, I have a hard time thinking that our citizens are going to want to feel the impact of us losing a large water customer. You know, that's something that they have no control over, it's something we have no control over, it has only to do with that private business.
But it was worked in our budget.
The issue, the number-one issue, is number one on this page. It is the sewage. And until that infrastructure and those issues are corrected, these issues are going to continue, and it's going to take more than just this one budget cycle. It may very well take more than five years. Just, you know, I wanted to restate something that was said in the budget work session. We had a 30% increase in our sewer charges in the gallons, the gallons that we sent to the city of Rocky Mount, a 30% increase in the gallons that we sent from this year as compared to the same period of time last year. We had a 0.3% increase in the gallons of sewer that we are charging to our customer. So, a 30% increase in the amount of water that we are paying to treat, and only a 0.3 increase. The math doesn't add up. It is all as a result of that water going into the sewer system and that rainwater that we are treating. And until that one point is fixed, these rates, I mean, this is what it's going to be. We've got to get that issue handled. And so, some of the things that Randy has mentioned, you know, some of the negotiations that we're working through, you know, a lot of those will help, but just want to say, until that one issue is corrected, you know, we're still going to continue to have problems.
Any other comments about the letter?
Just on that, the impact for the new water fees and rates, there's a blank column that can just be deleted.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes. Well, can you, I'm sorry, can you come to the podium? We're not going to get you on audio.
Okay. Al Hyde, 117 West Washington Street. It is needed to be noted in the letter that whoever is responsible for the billing failed to collect the 300,000. Accountability the citizens deserve to know. I realize it was a mistake, but it shouldn't be glossed over.
It's a mistake by every single person that's up here failing to see it.
No, you want to do the billing.
Failing to see it in the ordinance that we passed.
Okay, good.
It was a failure on the part of the people who were preparing it for failing to see that it happened. It was a failure on all of our parts. We are human beings, failures occur. We cannot single out...
That's great, but it should be addressed in the letter. It's called transparency, it's kind of why we voted again. It should be included.
But we don't want to undermine the larger issues that are going on in the water and sewer system.
And we also...
Which has since been corrected.
Okay.
I understand, and I'm all about transparency.
Oh, really?
Less than five minutes after discovering the issue, the issue was noted to all appropriate people, so there is that. But we don't want to, you know, make people think that the reason for these issues or the reason why we're actually increasing rates and the reason why the fund is in the state that it's in is because of something that's already been corrected.
We don't want them to think that someone made a mistake in the town office either.
That is not true, Al, and that's enough.
It's been stated...
It's been stated over and over again.
But not to the citizen rate in Nashville.
This is addressing what occurred in 2021 that is part of what is leading to the increases. That error had nothing to do with why rates are increasing, is the point of it. So, it doesn't belong in this letter. It is something that has been stated at public meetings, it's something that's been put out to the public, I think even in the paper. It's been things that have been discussed at the budget sessions. It's not anything that's being hidden, it is being made public. It just isn't a factor in this letter, and so doesn't belong in this letter.
Correct.
A mistake was made, but if you're asking for a name for a person, we're not going to do that.
I'm not asking that, but I think the citizens deserve to know that this also is a part of why...
It's not a part of why this is going on, though, I am.
The rates that were proposed in the fee schedule that was adopted...
The way I do math is different.
Would that be the same, whether that error was made wrong?
If you are short on 300,000 or 14...
Okay, that's enough, that's enough, thank you. Okay? We've got the list of the increases.
Mine's not a bad question, I just want to, can I just ask one question?
Please come to the podium.
James Baker, 103 East Green. These rates now, there are some of us that have separate meters like for our lawns. Can you tell us what our rates are now going to be for the water for our lawns since it's not going to go into the sewer rate?
Yes, sir. So, there is no base fee.
That's all I have.
There's no base fee for that. I believe the water rate is $6.50 per 1,000 gallons.
So, is that going to be increased?
It is going to be an increase.
Okay. I just didn't know what it was going to be.
Counsel, are there any other questions concerning this letter?
As long as we make those corrections, you see.
Do I hear a motion and agreement that we send this letter to our citizens?
So, we're not going to put in the letter about the loss of revenue for the sewer because we did not increase the rates until the 25th?
I don't think that should... Counsel, what do you think?
I don't think it's a factor in why rates are increasing, which is what we're trying to spell out for our citizens here. And I do understand what you're talking about with CFI, you know, that is a loss, but again, it's something that's out of, it's a private company, it's something that's out of our control, out of the citizens' control. These are the things that we can control, these are the things that have occurred that have cost out-of-pocket expenses, and I feel like we've covered what we need to cover.
On April 6, we did a budget amendment for And I asked the question, what is left in our enterprise fund balance? And according to my calculations, it was probably a little over $100,000, and I never could get an answer. And so, all this adds up. I mean, the loss of revenue that we were counting on from the sewer increase, it does count. The loss of CFI, our largest water user, it does count.
There was a...
The rate increases would have occurred even without those two things, without the mistake and even had CFI continue, this town was facing rate increases. So, although they may have had an indirect impact, yes, I don't see them as a direct impact that are going to affect the rate increases that we're having to do on July 1st.
One thing that bothers me about this letter is that no one consulted me about anything with Senate.
It was just sent as a draft to be brought to the council to do just what we're doing right now.
The constitution is tonight, that we're all allowed to do whatever suggestions we have.
Everything in this letter came from information that was provided to all of us at the public budget work sessions multiple times.
And I do also want to state that that information about the fund balance was provided to you, it was in a presentation, it's on the website, and it was in the budget work binder, several pages, that number, it was around 300-something thousand, 300, I can't recall the number, but it's in there.
But it seems that my answer question, no one could give an answer.
Yeah, it was, at the time, closer to around 100,000, but after shorting up the calculations and after spending has ceased for the year, it's closer to 300-something thousand, and that was presented to you during the budget work session.
I still think the shortage of funds that we were receiving from CFI that we did not receive should be part of, it was part of our justification for this budget, so I still think that should be included into it in the letter.
I can see that, and I can get on board with that one, because that's something that is, you know, continuing until we are able to fill that business with another similar type of water user or try to recruit for another spot, but that, I mean...
I'd like to have that included.
So, we can, do I hear a motion that we approve this letter with the inclusion of Larry? Do you want to make a motion?
I moved it with the inclusion of the cost factor that's by CFI closing, what it cost the town, be included with the letter based on that, and have that included, and then I'll move that we rewrite this letter to include all these changes and have it filled out.
Do we have a town response to the CFI closing? Like, have they listed the building for lease or sale? Are we recruiting? Or are we, is there anything that we can add in there?
They're still trying to recruit.
They're definitely seeking to fill that building.
But that building is so big, nobody needs that much space.
190,000 square feet.
Yeah, you know.
I'm just wondering, since we're doing town response on everything, whether...
They're trying, they've got some people on the hoof, but we cannot disclose that.
Larry has made a motion that we approve this letter pending the changes that you read in and adding the closing of CFI and mail this to our citizens, and anyone that has, wants to see the full rates or anything, they can request it from the town office. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
This letter will be mailed out to the citizens. Our next item on our agenda is an amendment to the budget. Sam, if you want to talk with us about that?
Yes, ma'am. So, this just came to my attention this afternoon, so I apologize for the late news. Just yesterday, one of our police vehicles was involved in a collision while apprehending a fleeing suspect. I believe it was actually two suspects. So, that police vehicle will be repaired, it's going to be a cost of about $5,000, so we'll have insurance proceeds as well as a deductible that would be paid by the defendant to cover those costs. So, this budget is for the repair of the vehicle.
Do I hear a motion that we approve this budget? Under, okay, sorry, yes.
And if I can add, the insurance, our insurance is going to file a claim with the driver's insurance to be reimbursed.
Okay, great. Do I hear a motion that we approve this amendment?
So, aye.
Second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. The next item is one that's not on our agenda, but usually in July, we just have one meeting. I've called all of the councils, and we have agreed, but I need a motion that we have one meeting in July, and that would be July 13. So, do I hear a motion that we change our meeting until July 13?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that change needs to be published.
Yes, absolutely. Let people know, that'd be great. Are there any other comments from the council? From the town manager?
I'm good.
And next, we have just come off the unit assistance list, if he could expand on that, Randy, that would help us.
I'll turn that over to our finance director, Sam.
So, I provided you a hefty packet here, I did some research. We were placed on the local government's commission unit assistance list in response to the 1890 audit. It's something that they review every year. It's due to findings, negative findings that are in the audit. Fiscal year 1819, it was regarding segregation of due due reconciliation items, some statutory violations. Looking back through the years, I just went back through what's like 1994, just about every single year that had been findings. It's something that we just need to be mindful of, but last year, we had a clean audit, so we were able to remove from that list, so that's a good thing, we want to keep that up. I will say that when a water and sewer fund, just because of the issues that were having there, it might bring some attention from the LGC, so we could be in danger of returning to that list just for that reason, but for now, we're on the right track.
So, this was about internal controls? That's why we run the list?
Yes, ma'am. Some statutory violations, budgetary issues, reconciliation of the accounts and things of that nature. But I provided you all, you know, every single finding since 1994.
And most of these findings were from prior fiscal years. I really want to commend our staff, Sam, Randy, and those who have worked very hard to get us back to a position where we are no longer being watched by the LGC. We certainly want to try to do everything we can to avoid that again in the future, and I think that part of... and I think that part of what we did here tonight with water sewer rates is one thing that's going to help us get our water sewer fund to a point where we won't have to worry about them being over vigilant in watching what we're doing there.
Yes, and I just want to also thank my staff, I know they're not here, there are about three ladies working with me, and they work really hard every day, they show up every day, and a lot of the town's residents know them by name, and I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work.
May I be in the front of business, I move real quick.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.